Seven o'clock, it's Wednesday, March 20th, 2013. I'd like to call the meeting of the Blackstone Millville Regional District School Committee to order. If we can please stand for the pledge allegiance. The pledge allegiance to the
.......................................
Introduction of members.
I'm Steve Tringali from Millville.
Erin Vinoco from Millville.
Brian Faulkner, Millville.
Kathy Robinson, Millville.
Wendy Greenstein, Blackstone.
Mike Buckley, Blackstone.
Diane Robyn, Blackstone. The Chair, John Eldridge, is not here tonight. We'll go into the agenda. Approval of consent agenda A items, the warrant, use of school facilities, field trip requests, and the minutes of the public hearing that was held. Was it just one short week ago? I'd be looking for a motion to approve consent agenda A.
So moved.
Motion made by Mr. Faulkner. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Tringali. Discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It passes. Public forum, there's no one here in the public tonight. Going on to FY14 budget, the adoption of the FY14 budget, and the review of budget proposals and options.
What I've placed in front of you would be the motions that would need to be made to certify the FY14 budget of $22,112,250. If you will see, there is a series of motions, and if anyone has any questions, I would be very happy to answer them. This is from the work from the workshop, and we have just provided it to you in a series of motions.
Is this open for discussion, ma'am chair?
Yes, it is.
Okay, so are we satisfied with the numbers that were presented last night? Were there any changes? Or did we, we had kind of left a few things open, Kim, last night, and I'm just wondering if maybe you can bring the committee up to date as to if any of those numbers flow correctly.
Right. What we did, what I did today was to go through the various numbers that we talked about last night, school by school. We looked at, we, everything now has been plugged into the actual budget itself for the adoption of the $22 million budget. The only question will be where we come in for health care, because we did move the number to the number that we discussed last night, and where we're at now on staffing. Once the teachers and the support unions make their decisions, then we will need to come back and look at the budget for adjustment if we need to do that. But other than that, the numbers worked, and everything has been moved in.
Well, when you say work, how can we expand upon that to understand how many cuts are involved in this budget, and as well as what other features we may ...
Currently, this is an extremely lean budget. We are looking at approximately 11 professional cuts currently in this budget, and that looks at what's been proposed. It also looks at what is currently in the budget, and it looks at three support staff. That's where we're at presently. What we've done is we have gone through, we've reduced supplies, we've reduced instructional materials, so we are pretty much at zero when we move ahead to looking at supplies, instructional supplies, as well as custodial supplies and instructional supplies. This budget does not support any new programs. It does not bring forth any new sources of options for our students, and in fact, it will decrease some of the options for our students as we move ahead when you look at some options that they currently have, and I am not able to be that specific right now because it does include staff reductions, and the staff have not been notified. Where we're at now will be depending on where we come in at health care. If we come in for health care at 4% or lower, then this number should hold that we have presently plugged in. I heard from our health care representative, and I certainly will invite him to attend the next meeting, so if you have questions, you can ask him. We've been turned down by Blue Cross Blue Shield, we've been turned down by Tufts, and it looks like we're going to be turned down by Harvard Pilgrim. We have a 10% increase for health care from our current provider, which is Maya, and we have a 4% increase from Fallon, and we're still negotiating with both organizations. If, we've also met with the support staff, and I've met with the educators, we invited them to an open meeting. We have asked them for a wage, lane, step freeze for FY14. If they would choose to turn down a wage, lane, and step freeze, then we will be going back in and reducing staff. We have absolutely no place else to reduce in this budget. If we look at staff reductions, we will be looking at class sizes of 30-plus. We will also be looking at reductions in professional staff up to 20, and we will be looking at approximately 10 to 15 support staff, depending on where we come in at, and this is on top of the cuts that we've already made. We have nothing new in this budget, and we now are at the point of where we're unable to support the present programs that we have worked so hard to put in place. The unfortunate part with this budget is it will be our students who suffer, and our students who will be the ones that will be in classes of 30-plus. We, and I can elaborate a little bit on the various options, because this has been a very difficult budget season for everyone involved. The committee has worked very hard at coming up with options. We certainly continue to examine every possible option. We continue to look at what other revenues or what other ways of increasing our revenue to put toward the education of our students. So this isn't something that's going to stop tonight. It's going to be ongoing. We've looked at regionalization, we've looked at moving the elementaries, we have a plethora of extra rooms, and if we were able to make some modifications to the regional agreement, we certainly would be much more efficient. But in order for us to do that, we need to have a motion, and we need to have a positive vote by both towns in order for us to approach this. And at this point, we just don't feel like we have enough time to spend to examine our, what we need to do to successfully pass this, to answer any questions which the community may have, and this is a process that we believe will not stop. We need to continue to explore it, but we do not believe that it's fair to place our students in the position of trying to rush something through. And so we will be moving this ahead in the years to come and looking at it. We've examined looking at moving the fifth grade to the middle school. We've also examined moving the eighth grade to the high school, and we do not think that that's an educationally sound move for either grade level. So we will not be exploring that one. What we will be exploring is an early childhood center, pre-K through three, and, or three K, pre-K through two, three, four, five, and we feel like that will certainly meet the needs of our students in a very educationally sound manner. The other thing that it will do, it will allow us to balance class sizes, because currently at the complex, our class sizes are upwards of 20-plus, 22, 24, 25, and at Millville, we're in the middle to low teens, high teens in some areas, with one grade level would be at 25, 26. And so we feel like this would help us balance. It also would enable us to have some efficiencies with our music, our art, our physical education and health programs. So we certainly do see that as something positive to explore. The other piece that we're heavily exploring is before-school care and after-school care. We believe that that would be a true service for our community, and we certainly do, will be moving ahead with that.
Anybody in the committee have any questions, comments?
I'd like to still see us put more money in community use. We 10,460, like we talked about last night. I really think that that's something we should explore, raising that to 65,000. That would cover our custodial costs for after-hours and weekends.
How did we come to the number of 10,480? Do you have it?
Back page, right under the exclusionary.
Oh, just under additional
B. B. Oh. Here. Involved. Involved. I can, how we come up with the community for the exclusionary cost? What we do is we look at the number of usage, what's taken out, and how much our facilities are used that we do not have reimbursement for.
So for example, if a Blackstone-only basketball youth group wanted to use our facilities, if it was an outside group, we'd have to charge them a certain amount, and since they're basically our own students, we have waived this fee. So this is sort of a tally of all the things that we waive for our own residents, in essence. 10,000, 480. But, you know, it's the scout groups, the performances, the basketball leagues, soccer leagues, things like that.
So what would you like to raise it to?
65,000.
Aggressive.
Well, I believe that if we, if, and we're going to have to negotiate this, but I believe that we, if we really look long and hard at the custodial staff and how the resource model is, that maybe we need to make some modifications in the days that they work in order to get this coverage. The building's in use all the time. This would, this would help both sides of that, and also would be a way for us to offset some of the expenses. So I think that this is a, this is a good move, and that the community unfortunately has to pay for these type of services, because we can no longer just take hot blanch and say that we'll eat these costs. We just can't do it.
Does that get split up? That comes into the exclusionary cost.
It's exclusionary cost.
And then, does that get split up by the same formula, or is that based on where?
No, it's a formula based on the, it's just divided 71.14
Okay. I didn't know if it was based on
28.82.
Which buildings are being used.
Whatever.
So are you saying increase it 265, or increase it by?
I'd say increase it to 265.
265. And is that a burden rate?
I'm sorry?
Is that a burden rate? Is that a fully-loaded rate for custodial?
I think that's probably a little bit higher than one. I think that's probably one and a half or so.
Okay.
So.
Well, I think we definitely have to be able to back it up, what the number is, when we go to the town. We have to be able to say that it's lost of the
Well, you figure the salary of custodians is about 35,000, then add a third on top of that, so it's about another 9,000, so 45. So it's about one and a half people.
Now, is this to put an extra janitor on to cover the staff, or is this a janitor we already have in place?
Well, you know
Well, actually, you weren't here last night, but the problem is, is that what we're, what we're under the gun here is that we have got to account for some of these building, building checks and the building being open, and we cannot afford to put a time and a half or double-time employee out there to do a building check any longer. You know, our, our account right now in overtime is about $55,000. We've expended about half of it as of February fir, about February 15th. I'm sure it's higher now because of snow removal and so forth, but we need to be, take the resources we have and deploy them most effectively, but this has been discussed over several of the budget sessions.
Well, there's, there are a lot of things going on, community, things that are going on in the buildings, and there always has to be someone here, a custodian available. So certainly, you know, some custodial, it would be appropriate to have it in there.
The other thing that we don't charge for, if it's school, and we don't even really charge community, would be for the electricity and any utilities that are used, the heat, et cetera. And our buildings are opened generally seven days a week with some kind of an activity. Other questions that I could answer?
So what you're suggesting, Mr. Buckley, doesn't change the numbers, it just moves some things around.
Well, it'll actually change the, it'll actually change a couple of things, Brian. Let's work on that now. Give me one second here.
Yeah. You have decreased that one bus under transportation.
I, yeah, I think
Did you put it back in?
It's your call. I don't think we put it back in.
We did not put it back in yet.
The new number for exclusionary would rise slightly. It'd be, it'll be, total exclusionary costs would be $1,889,923.
I'm sorry, could you say that again?
Gives us a total net exclusionary cost, as you take the 279,609 off of that. That'll give you $1,610,314. Exclusionary assessments changed slightly. Blackstone would now be $1,145,577. Millville would be 464,737.
Does that change the, what we'd be asking for additional contributions?
No, let's figure it out. Hold on. Let me give, just give me a minute, maybe if anyone else has any questions.
What was Blackstone's exclusionary cost? What's the way is that?
Actually, I took it out of here. Shouldn't have took this between. No, what I did is I took this number. The gross.
So their total.
It's minus 10. Yeah. Minus 10. And Millville's contribution, without the additional contribution at this time, 2.0, I'm sorry, $2,288,334. Hold on, just still
Makes it a little bit less. I did it the long hand way. I did it the long hand way. We'll see if I came out with the right numbers.
This is what I got.
Okay, what I have is the following. Blackstone's, okay, we know Blackstone and Millville's two numbers that totals $9,525,166 in revenue, and leaves us with a deficit of $1,167,213. We subtract $847,000, it's just from other revenue, which is the amount that has been transferred from excess and deficiency, circuit breaker, music and athletic fees, et cetera, et cetera. Leaves us a deficit of $320,213. Blackstone's additional assessment would to be 2279, 790, or 7, I'm sorry, 227,800. Millville's would be $92,414.
Almost.
What was the second one? What was Millville?
92,414.
414, thank you.
We don't need a motion for the excess and deficiencies? No? Was there one?
It's all over here. This is what we've done over here.
Yeah? I didn't know if we needed to
Is that it yet?
I, I was a dollar. But yes, that's what I got.
Well, we round, you round, so. We round it up. If you're Democrat, if you're Republican, you're Democrat.
I was just asking, do we need, I don't see any motions that apply the excess and deficiencies. That's good within that back page and everything?
I'm just
Oh, E and D, sorry. I thought it was higher than that. Okay. That's why I was looking for a different number. It's there.
But it's
Just for the purposes of discussion, and through the hard work of all the people on the budget subcommittee, this budget is extremely austere, austere, and it includes no salary adjustments, top to bottom, at all. So just so people understand that, that the district is not in a position to be able to afford anything from any free cash or anything like that. So any, anything like that, I just question the district that we probably will have to go back to member towns for additional contribution over and beyond what we're asking for in the future if those, if there is a raise that's negotiated. So.
And I could add that currently, this has no new positions, as I said earlier. If there are any job openings that will be posted, we've had several retirements, several will not be replaced. However, if there are any advertisements for positions, it is not adding any new programs at all.
Is the committee ready to start the motions? Do we have a discussion?
All right. Do we
Who's the first one?
Yeah. Go around, everybody can do a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt a gross operating budget for the year 2013, 2014 in the amount of $22,112,250.
Second?
Motion made by Mr. Tringali, seconded by Mrs. Vinoco. Any discussion? All in favor? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
So it's vote. Next, Mrs. Vinoco.
I'll make a motion to apply the following reimbursements to reduce said gross operating budget for the 2013, 2014 year. Chapter 70. Regional transportation, $279,609. And the school choice offset, a negative amount of $244,507.
Motion made by Mrs. Vinoco.
I'm not done.
Sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry. Above reimbursement total, $10,672,871. hundred and seventy-one dollars. The total net operating budget for 2013-2014 is eleven million, four hundred and thirty-nine thousand, seven hundred, I'm sorry, three hundred and seventy-nine dollars.
Motion made by Mrs. Binaco, is there a second? Second? Second by Mrs. Greenstein. Discussion?
Wait a second, I don't know if that number's right.
Yeah, I didn't think it was actually. Because we just changed.
You take the grants out later, Kim, right?
Right.
Okay.
Well, the chapter seventy is the contribution.
Okay, I know.
I was thinking it should be thirty, but it's not. See, it's a fifty.
Uh, yeah. No, Mr. Buckley's going to give me the numbers as we go.
I apologize, it's correct. Eleven-four-three-nine-three-seven-nine, okay.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's a vote. Next motion?
So this one needs an adjustment.
Yeah, Mike, could you give me the new numbers for the next one? Yes. Hold on.
Do you have another one of these?
You want one that's clean?
Yeah. Can pass it around?
This cleaner?
Yeah. Do you have the numbers?
All three numbers have changed.
Four.
I've one after that, too.
Yeah, all four of them will change.
You got it?
I have the new numbers. Can I get them off of you?
What about the minimum?
Yeah, I don't have the, oh, the minimum contribution.
It's seven?
Seven-two-three-six-eight-three-two.
Yeah, that's the minimum, right?
And then two-two-nine-eight-hundred-six.
Two-two-seven. One-one-four-nine-five-seven-seven. What's the?
Yeah, but that's the next one.
Two-two-seven-eight-hundred would be the Blackstone additional assessment.
Two-two-seven-eight-hundred. The minimum contribution.
The minimum contribution number should be one million, one hundred, I'm sorry, one-one-four-five-five-seven-seven. One comma one-four-five-five-seven-seven.
Okay, and the?
Additional, that's the exclusionary number, from, change to two-seven-four to two-two-seven-eight-hundred.
Right. Let's do this, let's take it from the top.
Okay.
Seven-four-six-four-six-three-two.
That's the total.
No, that's, that total has changed.
Seven-two-three-six-eight-three-two.
Yeah, but it's good, I gotta add this other thing to it.
Seven? Just gave him mine. Just trust, trust the pencil, Brian, trust the pencil.
I think you had it in the wrong place, though.
You think I had it in the wrong place?
Would we have done without calculus? Seven, oh, yeah, that's the number, seven million, four-six-four-six-three-two.
That was the original. So it's changed.
Still the same. It's just where you pay it.
The minimum contribution changes.
The distribution has just changed.
So we didn't have the additional contribution. What's their additional contribution?
Six-oh-nine-one is the number for two-five-five, and then one million, one hundred and forty-five thousand, five?
Seventy-seven.
Seventy-seven.
Two-twenty-seven.
Two-two-seven.
Eight-hundred. This remains the same for that.
My sum doesn't work on this machine, for some reason. Yep, seven-four-six-four-six-three-two.
Okay, so that doesn't change.
Nope.
So where does the seven-two-three-six-eight-three-two go?
That's the minimum contribution.
That goes to the minimum. The minimum goes from six-oh-nine-one-two-five-five to seven-two-three-six-eight-three-two.
No.
No.
That's, I'm sorry, that's the total of minimum and exclusionary.
What happened was your exclusionary costs went up slightly and your additional contribution went down.
Okay, so they net out.
They net out.
All right, so seven-four-six-four-six-three-two stays the same, six-zero-nine-one-two-five-five stays the same. One-zero-nine-nine-three-three-six is one-one-four-five-five-seven-seven.
Yep.
Two-seven-four-zero-four-one is two-two-seven-eight-hundred.
Correct.
Do we all concur?
Second.
Motion, we'll give you a copy later. Motion made by Mr. Faulkner, seconded by Mr. Buckley. Is there any discussion?
Do you want me to read it correctly?
No. Let's move forward. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's a vote. Okay.
Mine being next, these figures will change as well.
First one, correct?
The first one is correct.
The contribution doesn't change.
Okay. Yeah, I scratched it up. Do you want it? Can we do it? I didn't really.
It's two-three-eight-zero-seven-four-seven.
Yeah, I don't know why I did that. How did I wait on the second number?
I don't know.
I don't know, he's making things up if I went along. I have them here. I mean, it's not like it's a wrong number. It's very precise.
Okay, you ready, Kath?
Yep. Start with the first number not changing, second number.
Right, go ahead.
Oh, to assess the amount of two million, three hundred and eighty thousand, seven hundred and forty-seven to Millville to be applied to the operating budget for the 2013-2014 year, which includes?
That number stays the same.
Oh, one million, eight hundred and twenty-three dollars, uh, twenty-three thousand, five hundred and ninety-seven dollars for the minimum contribution of?
The next number is four-six-four-seven-three-seven.
Of four hundred and sixty-four thousand, seven hundred and thirty-seven.
Yep.
An exclusionary's cost and?
Ninety-two thousand, four hundred and fourteen.
Ninety-two thousand, four hundred and fourteen in addition contributions.
Motion made by Mrs. Robinson, second, is there a second? Second by Mrs. Greenstein.
They should.
They should.
What?
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It's a vote. Next motion?
These is the same, right?
Yeah, they're all the same.
I make a motion to apply the following amounts to the gross operating.
New guy, I didn't want to break you in too bad.
Budget for the year 2013-2014. Medicaid, sixty thousand. Preschool tuition, fifty thousand. Athletic event receipts, eight thousand. Miscellaneous revenue, thirty-five thousand. Interest, four thousand. E and D, three hundred and twenty-five thousand. Circuit breaker, three hundred thousand. User fees, sixty-five thousand. Grant funds, seven hundred and forty-seven thousand, for a total of one million, five hundred and ninety-four thousand.
Motion made by Mrs. Greenstein, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Robinson. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's a vote. Okay, the next motion, Mr. Tringali, you want to pick up again?
I move to adopt a capital and interest budget in the amount of three hundred and twenty-two thousand, five hundred and twenty-three dollars to be assessed solely to the town of Blackstone, which includes a hundred and seventy-three thousand, eight hundred and seventy-one dollars for the F W. Harden Middle School, and one hundred and ten thousand, eight hundred and ninety-five dollars for the BMR High School sewer connection, and fourteen thousand, five hundred and thirty-one dollars for the roof projects.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Tringali, seconded by Mr. Buckley, is there any discussion? All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? It's a vote. Next motion?
Make a motion to adopt a capital and interest budget in the amount of one hundred and twenty-one thousand, four hundred and nineteen dollars to be assessed solely by the town of Millville, which includes seventy thousand, five hundred and thirty-six dollars for the middle school, four hundred and forty-four, I'm sorry, forty-four thousand, nine hundred and eighty-eight dollars for the high school sewer connection, and five thousand, eight hundred and ninety-five dollars for the roof projects.
Motion made by Mrs. Binaco, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Faulkner. All in, discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's a vote. Okay, moving on to. We will. Yeah, we're gonna skip the student representatives, they're, I'm sure, off doing something very fun tonight, I'm sure. Report a superintendent. They'll have to report on it next time.
Okay, thank you. Part of our budget discussion included user fees. We looked at the athletic programs, we looked at the music programs. Our athletic director also looked at the area cost of other user fees in surrounding towns. We found that we were relatively on the low side, other than a couple schools which charged nothing. One school charged seventy-five dollars. All the other schools were in the two-hundred to four-hundred-dollar range. Therefore, looking at what the cost per sport is and how we can help support our students continuing to have extracurricular activities, it would be my recommendation to the committee to look at raising user fees for the FY-14 school year. The middle ground in the user fees that we have surveyed would be two hundred dollars. It would be my recommendation to the committee to raise user fees for sports to two hundred dollars. This is up from eighty dollars. We understand that this certainly may put a burden on some of our families. In the past, we've been very willing to work with our families in order for our students to participate. We certainly will extend the same kind of courtesy and relationship because we do want our students to have this opportunity. As far as the music fees go, it'd be my recommendation to the committee to raise it to one hundred and forty dollars. I would also recommend to the committee to have a total cap of six hundred dollars for the year. When we looked at various other schools, there are some areas that do not have caps, and there are some that do have five-hundred, four-hundred, six-hundred-dollar caps. So we feel like we're in the range of the other area schools. As far as football, though, because of the cost of the sport and it being a new sport, it would be my recommendation to the board to move football to three hundred and twenty-five dollars. So to recap, music, I would recommend to one forty for a user fee. Athletics would be two hundred. Football would be three twenty-five with a cap of six hundred dollars placed for the year as a family cap.
Okay, I need a motion before discussion, so.
I make a motion to, do we have to do it all separate, or can we do it together?
Why don't you make the motion, we'll do it all together, we can always withdraw.
Okay. I make a motion to raise the user fees for sports to two hundred dollars. Football, to raise it to three twenty-five, and music, raise the user fee to one hundred and forty with a family cap of six hundred dollars for the year.
There's a motion made by Mrs. Greenstein, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Binaco. Discussion?
I'm wondering now, a lot of insurance is up to four hundred dollars. Is that something that could be applied? I'm hearing that some of Fallon and a few more that they can apply that. Insurance per child towards that, is that something that's available to them to use as sports?
I have heard that commercial.
Fallon Clinic, for example, that I'm involved with, they'll give you up to four hundred per child, per year.
We'd have to look into that.
But I'm saying it's something that would.
Sure.
That'd be on the parent to figure that out, or chase that. We're not gonna get into the insurance.
Right, right, but I'm just saying for parents, that would be an opportunity for them. And also, could the clubs raise any money per se?
Specifically for?
Specifically towards tuition, some sort of fundraisers? Are they allowed to do that? To defray the cost if they wanted to as a group, whether it be the music or the football, specifically for the fees, or is that not allowed?
Yeah, we have not entered into that discussion. The discussion that we have entered into with the athletic director and the athletic and the music department, because we all know that they do above and beyond supporting their organization. But we've also asked the athletic department to start exploring various fundraising opportunities to support the, the support of the sport, which is kind of confusing. But how can they help with the students? So we have some organizations such as soccer, volleyball, basketball, and baseball, they are all exploring various fundraising activities. And what we are going to do is to sit down and have a discussion to iron out the finer points. We want the money to stay with that group to support the students. However, we cannot make it a cutthroat, so if one sport does this, it can't impact the other sport. So we need to decide how are we going to make this so it's fair for everybody but still maintains the sport. So we're looking at that. And I will tell you, without any hesitation at all, all the coaches have gotten behind this one hundred percent and are willing to do what they need to do to help fundraise. So we do appreciate that.
Thank you.
Okay, the motion's on the floor.
I have one other question. The family cap of six hundred dollars, it does not go any higher, even if football is, the football fee is included, but they still max out at six hundred dollars.
That would be correct.
Related question about the cap. Are they tracked separately? So I'm envisioning a student who's an athlete and also in band. Is his total contribution six hundred, or are they tracked sports and music separately?
Well, now, if these were adults, we would tell you they're tracked separately, but since this is for our kids, they're tracked together.
Any other questions, discussion? Motion is on the floor, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's a vote.
Thank you. Well, I will tell you that this winter certainly has provided me to see many mornings at four o'clock in the morning with various wake-up calls with the weather. And so we are looking at a number of snow makeup days. Because of needing to meet the mandate set by the state, we're now looking at attending school until June twenty-eighth. Part of what I've done in the last two weeks is to get a survey out to the staff, as well as a survey out to the parents, to see if there are any viable options of making up the snow days during April vacation, April eleventh, which is a professional day, and March twenty-ninth. The March twenty-ninth day creates a bit of a problem for us because of financial reasons and a contract with the support staff. We would need to be paying holiday pay plus the regular pay, and our budget just will not support that. Therefore, it would be impossible to move the twenty-ninth forward. When I look at April twelfth, contractually, as a superintendent, I have the ability to move one professional development day into a teaching day. And so I would be asking the committee to change the calendar to make April twelfth as a school day. I will be having a discussion with the educators association, as well as the support association, as how we are going to make up that professional development time, as this will be a teaching day. day. As far as April vacation, it would be the sixteenth, seventeenth, and eighteenth. Unfortunately, for the students, we're not able to staff our buildings during that time. On those days, I have over sixty-plus educators who said that they will not be able to attend educators and support people. Therefore, I cannot staff school. I do appreciate all the parents, all the faculty and support personnel that have answered the survey overwhelmingly from the parents' point of view. April eleventh was the number-one vote getter, April twelfth, sorry. And Good Friday came in right after that with two-hundred and forty votes. Unfortunately, we can't. So we're going to be altering the schedule. We will be attending school on April twelfth, and we will be attending school until June twenty-eighth. And what I've heard, we're free on Thursday, there's no snow, it's going to move out to the ocean, but I've heard there's a slight chance on next Tuesday, so please do not do any snow dances.
No.
Any questions from the committee about makeup days?
I have a question. I thought the date was the twenty-eighth, which is a Friday.
Twenty-eighth, what did I say?
And if you, well, and if you go the twelfth, then you back off a day, so it's the twenty-seventh?
No. Because we went yesterday.
Yesterday.
It's the twenty-eighth with the twelfth.
Yes.
Okay.
Now, come on with that. Do you have support staff that work five days before, five days after school, like guidance or anybody like that, that would go into physical July one?
Administrators.
Okay.
So we'll...
Not contractually teach us, okay.
And you said you can't add hours to the day.
No. Our next option would be to look at Saturdays.
Sure, that would be a popular choice.
And I think when you get into that, between the staff and the students who are going to come, I mean, how much education?
Definitely not the kids.
People have prior commitments, and that would be tough. Although, it's been done in the past.
Well, we had the roof issue, but that wasn't all schools that were affected, so you were able to flex some staff around.
Yeah. The proposed motions, the last time, and I do apologize, I didn't include it in your packet this time, but there was a motion that we had talked about moving forward, would be the stabilization, to ask the towns to establish, very simple language, it would just be to ask the towns for permission to establish a stabilization fund. So when the district did have some extra money, when we closed our budget out at the end of the fiscal year, it was possible to move money into that account. If you're interested in having that moved forward, I would need a motion.
Okay.
No.
I think it is a good idea, but I think the town, before they would probably vote on it, would probably want some stipulations on it about...
How it'd be used.
How it would be used.
It's outlined in the law.
How it can be used? Okay. Because usually they want it back.
Capital projects only, takes two-thirds vote to take it out of stabilization, just like the town does. Both towns do. Simple majority to place money in it. We've been good stewards of the towns', both towns' money.
I think so.
We, I think that it's high time that we have parity with the towns. The towns have a mechanism to be able to put aside money for their expenses, we should too.
Okay. Thank you.
Just pointed out that at the town meeting for the roof in Millville, it was asked of us why we didn't have any money put aside for capital projects, so... We're taking their recommendation.
And I believe that that gentleman that asked that question, his organization has never gone through the process of establishing a stabilization fund. They failed to follow the law as we are required to. Just to throw that out there.
At least we're just taking their recommendations.
Well, you know, I mean, we fronted the two towns, approximately a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars at this point, to get the roof projects off underway. Now, if you recall last summer, when we were talking about going to town and asking for seed money, and then coming back, we probably wouldn't be in a position where we're in, where we're about, we should be ready to go to bid very soon, hopefully if the Millville referendum passes, for the high school, and we're already approved. We'd still be waiting. We wouldn't have been to MSBA at this point if we had to go to them first. So, once again, that's a funding mechanism that, you know, should be available to us. But that came out of our operation this fiscal year in order to get this project moving.
As I recall, we also did that to improve the timeline. That didn't really work out for us, did it? Maybe it did. We worked, we did it to improve the timeline, to get the project off, and it's still...
We were hoping for before winter.
Hoping for, yeah.
But we're farther along than we would be, so...
Well, I think over the years, we have not gotten additional contribution from the towns, which has not really allowed us to do any, you know, heavy-duty maintenance, not, you know, not maybe even necessarily capital, but like, good maintenance that needs to be done. So that would certainly be a benefit to us and to the towns, to not have to go to them when something needs to be done to their buildings.
How old is the high school? Again?
Forty-two years old. Forty-three.
Forty-two years old. It's not getting any younger.
Nope. Okay.
First graduating class in seventy-one, so...
Is that the only motion? I mean, is that the only proposed warrant?
There's one other one.
Oh.
We have our own compensation language that goes down to the two towns.
Okay.
I'd like to see it just stripped down and take out this unenforceable, unmanageable attendance requirement.
Did the towns ever pick up on that? They talked about it, but I didn't think they had.
No idea. No idea. But, I mean, it's kind of crazy, it's kind of foolish that we put such strong demands on ourselves and other organizations don't have to. So I don't think that it's, I don't think it's germane, I don't think anyone should be sitting here counting that stuff. If you're not able to make all the meetings, like, we've been out about two or three nights a week for the last several weeks in various formats, then I think our commitment to the communities has been proven most. You don't need to ask for permission. But I'd like to see it just...
And who's keeping track of that, anyway?
Somebody does.
Nobody does.
Attendance and such or something.
Who's taking attendance? Luke, you taking attendance?
This was the reaction to a member that wasn't in attendance very often several years ago, and this was the result. And it's, I don't believe that the Board of Selectmen in Blackstone, which adopted similar language, I don't know how much enforcement's been...
Actually, it was funny, when we first came up with it, the first year, there was a lot of discussion about why it wasn't stronger, and...
Why isn't it a hundred percent?
Yeah, even though the selectmen in other boards didn't have any at all, so I thought it was kind of interesting.
And they still don't have any?
I don't believe so. I think they talked about it, but I don't think they do.
We should be allowing all of their committees.
There's nothing like this for any other board.
Well, yes, Blackstone Valley Tech School Committee also has it, and they have a more stringent requirement. So I think we're only going to cause commotion over taking it out when it isn't causing an issue being there. I mean, the other school committee in our town meeting has it in there, and I believe they have to be at a higher percentage of meetings. So what happens if it gets voted down, and...
Fine, you don't want to put it out there, but I just think it's a crazy...
I'm just saying, I mean, if it's not...
I think it's a, that is, the remedy is far worse than what the issue really was. This is like overthinking this type of thing. You want to leave it alone, fine. Valley Tech meets once a month, okay? So if you can make twelve meetings a year, I guess you're all set. Now, I know they have subcommittees and all that stuff, but they meet once a month, so...
I'm just saying that someone at a town meeting may point that out, and again, we have to have an answer for them. Why are we changing the language?
Well, I think we just answered it.
Then vote against my motion, that's all. But you have to send those, you have to send the language down, anyway, so...
With Aaron, I'm fine with leaving it what it is, and sixty percent or whatever.
Aren't both town wars closed?
They will take them.
They'll take that.
I'd rather spend time on the additional contribution this year.
Than explaining ourselves over why we're changing language.
It's probably not worth picking out.
Good strategy. Okay, so we'll go with, leave the attendance one as is, and then the stabilization account.
Do we have to have a motion, too?
We need a motion.
I need a vote.
Separately, is there a motion for the stabilization account?
So moved.
A motion made by Mr. Faulkner, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Tringali.
Ms. Shaverhood, you have the language from the time...
From the last time, yes.
Could you just share the committee?
Discussion. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's a vote. Motion for the stipends with attendance policy. Is there a motion?
I'm moved.
Motion by Mr. Buckley, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Vannaco. Discussion.
That's to leave it alone, is that what you mean?
To leave it alone, but it's got to go out there. All in favor? Signify by saying aye. Opposed? It's a vote.
The final, several meetings ago, the Boys and Girls Club came and presented a solar project. We had, you had some questions about the amortization chart. We asked the engineers about that chart, and this is what I received back. The last five years, which would be twenty-one through twenty-five, would reflect the savings as listed on the amortization chart. It will expire after the twenty years, and at this time, the Boys and Girls Club can either purchase the system or have it removed, which would affect us if we would go into the agreement, then we would be looking for new support for our electrical system. They state that the rate in twenty years would be four to five cents per kilowatt, which would generate a lease payment. I'm not sure how much clarification that provided us. It would be over a long period of time. The other thing that I would share with you, you know, we've locked into some electric rates, and I think several years ago, you saw a drop, pretty dramatic drop, in the electrical use, and I've locked into that rate for several more years. They said that it would be different than that, but I guess, knowing that we have this for several more years, perhaps it would behoove us to explore our own projects, or to look at what other options we have, because locking the district into a twenty-five-year plan is rather frightening to me, especially when we don't see a lot of savings for a large number of years. But that would be up to the committee.
Well, looking at the numbers, and I'm not an expert in this area, but it just, it didn't see, I didn't see compelling savings, where you could say, okay, you could put your arms around, you know, a couple hundred thousand bucks a year, or something like that. And I just believe that there's probably some other programs we should be reviewing or looking at before we jump into this.
That's a long time to lock in for.
That's twenty-five years is right, may as well.
You know, I think we should be exploring, you know, gas in this facility rather than oil. You know, I know Millville has a situation here that they don't have natural gas. Yeah, I'm not sure where the natural gas is, I don't know if there's any on Federal Street or not, but, you know, we should be looking at some of that stuff, and seeing if there are any grants or rebates like we've seen in, well, commercial gets a rebate, homeowners some rebates, I've availed myself of several of them in the last year or so. I'd like to see us go do that.
Could put a wind turbine up on the big rock behind the high school.
I want a wind turbine.
The chair would be very upset at that, he doesn't, would never want to see a wind turbine up here on the top of the hill, so if you're watching, John, I'm thinking of you.
John, really? No, he was against wind turbines.
He wasn't a big wind guy.
You know, we have explored a wind turbine up here, and we don't have consistent eighteen-mile-an-hour winds, and that's what you have to have for them.
With the hot air that comes out of here on a Thursday night, you'd think it'd be no problem.
It has to be constant.
A consistent word.
I think that criteria is pretty much anywhere, except on the ocean.
Oh, the ocean, yeah.
It's got to be on the mountain tops somewhere.
There's a website that you can go and you can see how much wind you would generate.
Up on the hill? On top of Chesapeake?
Okay. Do we need a vote to say no, or we're just not going to pursue it?
I'll thank them?
Yes.
Yeah, we could always say not at this time.
Yeah. Let's start negotiating. Price is down. Okay, subcommittee reports. Strategic plan.
Strategic plan, we didn't, we canceled last night's meeting because of weather and because of the budget meeting, actually, so...
We're almost there, though.
So we're going to reconvene in the next couple of weeks. I've got a couple, people gave me back some dates that work for them, and we'll continue to keep that moving, so. We made progress, continuing to make progress, so...
May I, if I may, I have to excuse myself for Board of Health meeting, but thank you.
We're coming over there next, all of us.
Nothing new on policy for Mrs. Robin and Mr. Eldridge. Regional agreement? Mrs. Vannaco, Mrs. Greenstein.
We actually, we put out a survey about a month ago, and have gotten one-hundred-and-ninety-five responses from parents, community members, and we had a separate survey for teachers and staff members. I have the results for the community member survey, which we'll print up a copy and get to you all.
We can put it on the website.
Yeah. I can just read through them, too, if you want, real quick. We had one-hundred-and-ninety-five responses to the survey. The first question of, would you, as a parent of an elementary student, either Blackstone or Millville, like to have the opportunity to school choice your child to attend the non-resident elementary? We had fifty-seven percent yes, and forty-two percent no, and several comments. Second question, as a parent, I would be in favor of the district forming an early childhood elementary school consisting of grades pre-K through two. That was sixty-two percent yes, thirty-eight percent no. As a parent, I would be in favor of the district forming an elementary school consisting of grades three, four, five. Fifty-eight percent yes, forty-two percent no. As a parent, I would pay for a before and after-school program if one existed. Sixty-nine percent yes, thirty percent no. So I think that's something we're definitely going to pursue. As a parent, I would send my child to the non-resident elementary school if a before and after-school program existed. And that was really just a general question, too, you know, it kind of went along with the school choice one. Do we need it in both towns if we were going to move forward with that? The yes was forty-one percent, and no was fifty-nine. So we definitely see that we'd have to supply it for both buildings. If you already have a middle school or high school-aged child, did they experience difficulty transitioning into the regionalized middle school or high school? There was a do not apply to me, that was forty-two percent. No was fifty-two percent, and yes was six percent with supporting comments there. The existing agreement states the middle school and high school are regionalized. Would you like to see the students come together at an earlier age? Sixty-two percent yes, thirty-eight percent no. And then we asked for people to sign up if they wanted to participate in a committee going forward. About twenty percent of the people that answered the survey sent in their emails, so we will be contacting community members, staff members shortly, and we're going to start working on this, so we can aggressively work towards something that will, you know, be better for the kids in the future. But it's not something, like Ms. Shaverhood already mentioned, that we're... that we're, we're not going to try to attempt it for the next school year. We want to do it, and we want to do it right. And that, that was the other thing I wanted to mention, was we, we do have all the names and emails, and you will hear from us shortly if you signed up for that. We're working on a meeting date.
Now, if they haven't been able to answer the survey, I know we closed it on March eighth, but I believe you can still answer the survey, because I believe there's, how many students in our district?
Eighteen.
And we have a hundred and ninety-five who answered, so it would be a good idea to continue to answer the survey, so that when we do meet in the next couple of weeks and analyze all the results, we'll have a better number to look at.
Okay. Legislative, Mr. Buckley?
No update.
Facilities?
We're live, that's about it.
We need to do that.
Public forum. Come on up.
Kathy Stearman, Millville, I came in just a little bit late. We were talking about the budget. How many staff members would be cut as the budget sits right now, as you just approved?
We have approximately.
Eleven.
Eleven.
District-wide.
District-wide.
Okay. And in the budget, you said that there could be either a four percent increase or a ten percent increase in healthcare. How do you build your, which number did you use to build your budget?
Ten percent.
Okay, just curious more than anything. And I did hear, so the, regionalization, changing the agreement will not be on the warrants this coming year?
Yeah.
It will be looked at in coming years, but it's off the table for this year?
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much.
I do have a question.
Come on up.
And I apologize for being late, I had other commitments as well. Getting back to the certified budget, we certified the budget at twenty-two million and change. With eight hundred thousand dollars, I heard, we're applying eight hundred thousand dollars to that deficit, with the rest being asked for for by additional contribution from the towns, is that correct? Yes, no, maybe so.
Well, the deficit is, is.
One point.
One point five less the, I'm sorry, one point two, right?
And that's, that's where I was at, one point two was the deficit. You, you came up with a deficit of three hundred and twenty thousand, two thirteen.
Yep.
Which you applied for additional contribution, so where did the other money, where did we cut from for the eight hundred thousand? Is that the eleven staff members? And is that from both, both units?
No, the eight hundred thousand dollars is the money that's been applied from district reserves, such as Medicaid funds, preschool funds, athletic reserve, interest earned, music and athletic fees, circuit breakup.
And then with the eleven cuts, is that district?
Those cuts were already applied, and they show up in the twenty-two million number.
Okay, and that's both, both units?
Yep.
Unit A and B?
Mm-hmm.
Total of eleven.
About eleven, yeah.
As of now.
So with, as of.
But if we don't get additional contribution, that will increase.
Correct, so additional contribution, we're looking for three hundred thousand dollars approximately. Okay, thank you.
Committee forum, what? I'll ask the back of the debate if they met today.
Oh, yeah, Mrs. Cody, could we ask you to come back?
Wish me a happy birthday.
Is today your birthday?
Coming up, no, it's coming up, I have to, it's coming up. A little impressed about that.
We hope you have a happy birthday.
Twenty-nine?
Thank you. Look great for twenty-nine.
What day?
We were just wondering, earlier we had approached the educators and asked for wage laying step frees. I do believe that you all met this evening, and we were just wondering if you could shed any light on your meeting.
We had an informational meeting with the educators, we had a very good turnout, we had a healthy discussion. We did not take a vote because it wasn't a formal association meeting, but it was the consensus of all that we needed more information. So at Tuesday's bargaining session, we will come back to the committee and try to get the questions answered that the members of the association asked, and we could move forward from there. There was no, that's all the information I can give right now, just because it was just informational and we didn't take a vote.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, no more members of the public, we'll go to committee forum, Mr. Tringali.
I believe this is the first meeting we've had since the roof project vote. I'd just like to thank the two towns for their positive support of the roof projects. It was great to see. Another thing, the spring sports are underway, I guess I'm taking over for the students. The spring sports are underway, and it's great to see all the kids, just all over the school at the end of the day, it's really great. And also, thanks to the budget committee, I know we've been practically living together the last month or so, all their creativity and their stamina the last couple of weeks. Mr. Buckley, I know you've done a lot with the technological end of things and all that, and as well as Ms. Shaverhood and her staff. This has been a long project, it's not over, but it's been a long stretch and at least one hurdle.
I'll follow what Mr. Tringali said about the town meetings, we definitely appreciate the support from the towns in making our buildings safer and hopefully lasting a very long time, and so, thank you.
So, Mr. Tringali made a segue over to spring sports, but I do want to, our last formal meeting, we all, as Mr. Eldridge likes to say, we did a giddy-up, so we can get out of here and watch our boys' basketball team, so I want to just congratulate them on a great season. We're still waiting for them to come to one of our meetings to, to talk to us about the season.
That's awesome.
But, you know, we did get out of here and saw a thrilling game, to say the least. Unfortunately, it didn't work out to the benefit of our guys, but I just want to congratulate them, it was, it was great to get over there and watch that game, and they could help, hold their heads high, they did really well, and hopefully they'll continue to next year, so, that's all I have.
I just want to piggyback on what Mr. Tringali said about the budget. I know this being my first time on the committee, it is a long process, and it is, you know, three days sometimes a week, and it's not easy, so I appreciate everybody who goes to the meetings on a regular basis, and look forward to the meetings winding down.
This is only the start of this.
I know.
Winding down, are you kidding me?
I know, it's.
Now we have, now we have the, this is the easy part, just coming to a number. But anyway, I always wanted to talk a little bit about the, the budget, not to break a broken record, but we pretty much have depleted any and all of our reserves, okay? Just so you understand, and folks watching home, our excess and deficiency account was certified at five twenty-five, we're taking three hundred thousand off of that, so, and applying it towards next year. So that makes, gives us about two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars in the bank. And you say, well, that's a lot of money. Well, not if you figure that the budget is twenty-two million, it's like a percent. So we have a one percent reserve. We are also using all of the circuit breaker money that was in this, that was allocated to us in fiscal thirteen, which we could have spent in thirteen and fourteen, so we're, we are spending it in fourteen, and we're taking a good chunk out of next year's anticipated number. Now, circuit breaker is designed for extraordinary and excessive costs related to children requiring special services, typically children that are going out to another program, either through tuition and transportation. So our, our number for, was about two seventy-two this year, I believe, we're placing three hundred thousand in, in this year's budget to lower our, to, to close our deficit. So my point is, is that we are exceptionally lean, even with the additional contribution, we'll only be about three percent above net school spending numbers. So we are not able to fiscally really achieve a lot of the programs that we would like to see in the services we'd like to see given to our children. So this is a very lean and very tight budget, so I don't want anyone to think that, well, they must have money, they always have money. Well, if you think we have money, I'd, I'd love you to come take a look at these numbers and see where I'm, where we're missing it, because I can't find it. This is a, I want to thank my fellow members and the superintendent for a lot of hard work, and Ms. Scunjo and the staff in the central office for responding usually in, in pretty timely fashion to a crazy man on the other end of an email address, emails asking for this or that, that we've been able to put this together. I urge you all to come to the town meetings and also to the finance committee hearings over the next several weeks to hear more about the budget, ask any questions, we're easy to find, email addresses, I believe, are on the website, you can always call the superintendent's office, we're glad to get back to you as soon as we can. This is only a, a beginning, of, this is a, this is a milestone tonight to adopt the budget, now the real, real effort goes between now and the end of May, so, and that's about it. Thank you.
I don't think there's really anything I can add to that, it's been a long budget season. I think we put together the best budget we could. I think through the process, though, we have come up with some really great ideas about long-term things that we hope to, to be able to build a positive change here. My only thing, I would like to thank Mrs. Faulkner's class for the A-OK. I will be passing it along to someone, and I guess I'm supposed to change the comment? Mine says you're the best. So we will pass that along, and hopefully.
I did. Vote for the, vote for the additional contribution, that's what I put. That's what I had a lot.
So hopefully, we will see flowers going around our district, and even if somebody outside our district could use a little, little happiness to their day, that that can, it can go outside, too. I think we have done a giddy-up tonight, and I think I'd be looking for a motion to adjourn the meeting.
So moved.
Motion made by Mrs. Vanaco, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Faulkner, all in favor? Aye. Aye? Opposed?
Oops, thank you.